You all rise for a pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to have the Secretary perform roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Selly?
Present.
Mr. McHale?
Here.
Mr. Articus?
Here. Here. Okay. With the board members we have here this evening, they've all received the minutes from the April 19th meeting, get a motion to accept those minutes. It's all moved.
I'll second that.
Motion being taken, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay. We're here this evening for an adjourned public hearing for Gasland Petroleum Route 9D in Houstonville. This is for a site plan, lot line consolidation, and special use permit. Need a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Will we go in? I'm going to have this brief statement. Play some ground rules for this evening. This is a continuation of a public hearing for Gasland Petroleum for a site plan, lot line consolidation, and special use permit. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comment and an important relevant information regarding the project. It is not the function of the planning board to promote or oppose a certain project if it complies with the appropriate sections of the zoning law and if the application is consistent with all the criteria set forth in the zoning law, the planning board has no authority to deny the application. Additionally, the planning board does not have the authority to regulate competition between businesses. Prior to the applicant's professional's presentation, the planning board attorney to describe differences between the special use permit issued by the planning board and the use variance which comes from the zoning board of appeals. After the applicant's professionals have made their presentation and described the project in its entirety, the hearing will be open for public comment. Those speaking must identify themselves and stately clearly their name and address. All comments are to be directed to the planning board and not the applicant and/or the applicant's professionals. For the sake of expediency, redundant comments will not be entertained but will be acknowledged as being already brought to the attention of the planning board. No cross-talk between the applicant and the public will be allowed during the public hearing, and the duration of each individual comment will be three minutes. If the planning board decides to close the public hearing this evening, the board will allow for written public comments to be submitted for a 30-day period. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our attorney, the planning board, to describe the differences between a special use permit and a use of variance.
Do I need that one to... I don't know. Try that one. Mr. Chairman, I'm Thomas Wood. I'm covering as the attorney for Wapandra on this matter. I'm regularly the town attorney in the town of East Fishkill. But in the chairman daughter would be helpful this evening just to make a preliminary comment or two with respect to part of the process before us. This property owned by an applicant has come forward, filed with the planning board, is located in the Hamlet mixed-use zone of the town. That's provided for in the town zoning ordinance, and when the town adopted that zoning ordinance some years ago, it zoned this area Hamlet mixed-use. The zoning code also contains a provision for what's known, many of them, special permits, and a special permit is a use that can be applied in certain districts provided the applicant can meet certain criteria in the use. So this applicant has seeking approval for a gasoline station, gasoline filling station, which is allowed as a special permit use in the Hamlet mixed-use zone. So the application before the board must demonstrate eventually to the satisfaction of the board that all of the requirements of both the zoning ordinance and the special permit are satisfied. This is different than a use variance. A use variance is considered by a zoning board when a property owner can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the zoning board that no, none of the permitted or special use uses, special permit uses are viable for the use of the property, that the property would not derive a reasonable return. That's not the case here. A use variance is not required because the zoning ordinance provides for this type of use by virtue of a special permit.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant. Not sure who wants to start, but I know you have a few professionals that want to go through different presentations regarding the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I understand it's permissible to remove our masks while we're speaking.
Yes.
Thank you. Nicholas Ward Willis with Keenan Bean on behalf of the applicant Gasland Petroleum. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Wood, for also your explanation. You know, Gasland is treated, should be treated differently than any other property owner coming before this board. It's not about competition. It's not about whether people think there should be more gas stations or less gas stations. We have the right as a property owner to proceed with our application and have the standard set forth in the law, as you've said, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Wood has stated. And a lot of the comments that have been out there have not been germane. Well, tonight, we will have those germane comments that we as applicant can address them. This project has evolved in response to comments from the consultants, from DOT, from the county, and from the public. We think the applicant, the application before you meets the criteria required for the issuance of a special use permit, and we comply with all zoning requirements and the town's goals set forth in this comprehensive plan. It's permitted by the existing zoning subject, as Mr. Wood said, subject to the issuance of a special use permit. We've, in our prior submissions, have gone through those. There are three criterias at issue here. The special use permit for the operation of a gas station set forth in Section 240-52 that sets forth requirements for the fuel pumps and storage tanks that we satisfy, and then talks about the use of the building in the Hamlet district, that dwelling units can be, can also be permitted there when we satisfy that criteria. There's also a special use permit regulations under Section 240-81.7 that addresses mixed uses, and we've gone through and satisfied how we satisfy each of those criteria. And then there are the general standards set forth in Section 240-44 that talks about the location and size of the use and nature and intensity of operations involved, and goes through how we need to be in conformance there. And we satisfy each of those criteria, specifically with respect to the access to the streets and the traffic flow. The New York State Department of Transportation has granted us conceptual approval back in February. We've received additional comments from them that expand upon that conceptual approval that Dr. Greeley, our traffic expert, will expand upon. Additionally, the county DPW has offered its approval with respect to our plan and offered comments. So we think in all respects, Section 240-44 general standards, we satisfy each of the four criteria that's set forth within those requirements. And upon the board finding that, the town code has said that then the special use permit must be granted. There's been gas stations permitted in this area and this property since 1963. Suggested a gas station is not unusual. They are central to the Hamlets. They add to the viability of Hamlet, a special convenience store, and this project in particular is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it's doing exactly what the town wants with respect to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan notes that Houstonville is not functioning as a town center at this time due to a lack of sufficient passerby and sufficient pedestrian amenities such as sidewalks in public places. That's on page 51 of the comprehensive plan. This application includes the construction of sidewalks in public places to create a more walkable community, which is essential to starting that vibrant community that you want. We will have retail activity. We will re-bring people to the site. That is what the community wants in its comprehensive plan. The addition of sidewalks and the establishment of architecturally appropriate mixed-use development is a significant step towards achieving the goals and objectives of the town's comprehensive plan. It also calls a comprehensive plan on page 35 for new development in the Houstonville district to include housing above the retail use, recognizing that that symbiotic relationship between the retail and the housing creates sort of that Hamlet center that you want, which is not there presently with the dilapidated buildings in that areas, many of which, some of which are boarded up. The project is also consistent with the county's Center in Green Space Plan. The Greenway Guide describes Houstonville as a small historic hamlet that has become dominated by traffic due to the lack of sidewalks, heavy volumes on Route 9D, and cars going to nearby New Hamburg train station. The proposed gas station will serve the needs of existing drivers passing along Route 9D. Proposed development includes, as I said, constructions of sidewalks to create a more walkable community, and is in conformance with the Greenway Guide developments for gasolines and convenience stores. So not only do we meet the zoning, we meet the comprehensive plan.
All right, now, go ahead.
You're good. Not only do we meet the zoning requirements, but we satisfy the comprehensive plan and Greenway Guide's, Development Guide's with respect to development in this district. I also want to talk about the importance of a record because there has been some misstatements about our application or our project, and tonight we're going to do our best to satisfy those. And I would hope that the chair will not allow character assassination of our client who has a very good reputation, has received many environmental and land use awards and recognition in the industry for building aesthetically pleasing properties, and turning contaminated properties in brownfields and redeveloping them and making the community better. We're proud of that, and we will do everything to protect that and hope tonight the comments will be with respect to the facts of the application and not the character of the our client that's here before you. I also want to talk about making a record because two weeks ago I attended a public governmental meeting that had been organized by Councilmember Beal, and we find that to be inappropriate. He was acting in a governmental capacity, had government resources, town officials there, and we find that's inappropriate. It's impermissible bias is what is called in the law. The application will be coming before Mr. Beal. I'm trusting that he won't be making comments tonight because that would be inappropriate. I hope his town attorney would advise him that, but we're making our record tonight that we find that inappropriate. I know that Mr. Beal, four times at that meeting that I attended two Saturdays ago, stated he opposed this project. He went beyond that. He identified one of the competitors who was opposed to this project and said, Joe's handing out signs. Go get a sign from Joe. Completely inappropriate. I'm making that for the record because he should not be making those comments when it's an application that's going to be coming before him. It's impermissible bias. So I'm hoping he doesn't worry tonight.
I was there for that night.
Can you move the mic closer?
Can you just move the mic a little closer?
Yep.
There you go.
So I think he was just trying to reach out to his constituents within his ward.
I understand that may-
I'm not defending him, but I, again, let's...
I understand that may mean it's intent. I think he went beyond that when he then opposed the application, no less than four occasions, and that is inappropriate when you have an application that is before you.
His meeting outside of here had nothing to do with what's going to happen here tonight.
Understand. I'm going on the record in case you should continue that inappropriate comment tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, without further ado, I'm going to ask our planner, Mr. LaPine, to come in and present to you, and he'll be followed by Dr. Greeley and concluded by our architect, Mr. McCormick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christopher LaPine with the Chasing Company, representing the applicant this evening. We were before the board in March, two months ago, where we presented a new plan which showed the building kind of relocated within the central portion.
Can't hear you. I don't know if the lights-
Take your mask off.
The what?
You can't hear any of that back there.
You can't hear any of that back? No.
Time. So you like getting that?
Hit the one off. Can you hear me on this one?
Oh, much better.
All right. Yeah. We were before the board in March where we presented a revised plan of the overall 1.8 acres of the property that Gasland Petroleum is looking to redevelop. At that time, we showed a building that was centrally located within the five parcels, and at which time the plan board recommended they would like to see the building relocated along the New Hamburg Road section of the property. The plan that was submitted to the town relocates the building to the New Hamburg Road portion of the property. The building size has remained the same as it was previously. It's 3,800 square feet on the first floor, 3,800 square feet on the second floor. What we did change was we removed the liquor portion of the project that was incorporated into the last submission that was before the board. The entire plan set now depicts a convenience store along the entire first floor of the building. We think this is a great project in terms of that it creates a mixed-use redevelopment and provides both ample landscaping and new sidewalks along Route 9D and New Hamburg Road, and it also provides pedestrian-scale connections within the site. The current property as it is isn't a rundown state. We've shown pictures here to present to the board that there's a lot that's been said about a site plan that conforms to the character of the Houstonville district. Here's the character of the properties that we're looking to redevelop here. This is not what we consider to be the character that one would think of in a hamlet. The proposed plan, as we've shown it here, consists of this new building, which Lisko McCormick will go into the architecture that describes, which has the residential appeal on the New Hamburg side of the road. And what that's doing also is it's obscuring the gasoline pumps and the canopy, which is taken to secondary position, and the parking as well is taken to secondary position by locating this building along the intersection. We provided extensive landscaping, as you requested at your last planning board meeting. We also have this eight-foot-high cedar fence, which further provides the necessary screening that the planning board had requested. The overall site provides 32 parking spaces. We've provided low-level lighting on this entire site. There's not one parking space that exceeds two-foot candles for lighting, and we have a maximum of 8.9-foot candles beneath the canopy for the lane. We average around, I think, six-foot candles, which fall within the ISNA recommended foot candles for canopies, which is five to 10-foot candles. That was noted in the Duchess County letter, and I wanted to bring that up to let you know that we are following the standards associated with that. In terms of the improvements in the Route 9D and New Hamburg right-of-way, we are expanding the New Hamburg roadside to the north so that we can provide a better alignment with Old Hopewell Road. That's why you're seeing this new curb line and a land dedication that's shown on our site plans and also within Mazer's plan that they've shown as well. We've incorporated a sidewalk along the New Hamburg side, which connects to the sidewalk proposed along the 9D side. Also along the 9D side, there is going to be a granting of land to the DOT to further widen the right-of-way improvements there and also to accommodate the additional lane that's being proposed on New Hamburg Road. Along with that, there is a series of lighting improvements that are taking place that'll improve the function of this intersection that Mazer will go into detail as well describing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design, formerly Mazer Consulting. We are the traffic engineer on the project. So not to repeat some of the items that Chris had gotten into, we had prepared an original traffic study for this site. The original project had only access to Route 9D. It was proposed as a right-turn entry and right-turn exit driveway only. That traffic study, the data collection that was done for that project was done in 2019, before the pandemic. That base traffic data was also compared with historical information from New York State DOT to establish the existing conditions on both Route 9D, New Hamburg Road, and Old Hopewell Road. That study was subsequently updated once we obtained the property and access to the county road, to New Hamburg Road, which gave us now two points of access. The study followed standard procedures required by New York State DOT in terms of projecting traffic in the background, plus the traffic that would be generated by this site. The county also was involved with the review of that study and the location of the points of access. Back in February, we had responded to several comments that had been made on the original traffic study at the public hearing, and then subsequently we received a conceptual approval from New York State DOT on February 25th, agreeing with the right-turn in, right-turn out to Route 9D, the requirements for upgrading the traffic signal, as well as the access to the county road. Now, for the county road, we received a conceptual approval letter from, or actually it was an email, with a plan attached from the county for the access connection to New Hamburg Road. As Chris had mentioned, part of this plan is to widen. We are widening along our frontage on New Hamburg Road to improve the alignment. So right now, if you're traveling on Old Hopewell Road, heading towards the intersection, you have to jog to the left to get through the intersection. We will be widening on the north side, the northwest corner, to create a more gradual alignment, a better alignment coming through that intersection. Recently, last Friday, there was another letter from New York State DOT with some additional comments about our driveway, which they said would be coming as they get into the review, and suggested to narrow, now that we have two points of access, to narrow the exit driveway onto Route 9D because we didn't need the width anymore because of the way that the fueling deliveries would be able to be made. Also in that letter, they expressed the concern about the placement of the convenience store apartment building closer to New Hamburg Road. However, we still feel that we can provide the alignment improvements because we're going to be dedicating land to both the state and to the county in order to perform the widening of the roadway and the installation of the sidewalks. The state requires that the sidewalks be within their right-of-way boundaries, so part of our plan, which we've already had what's called a take-line meeting with New York State DOT where you discuss the parameters for the dedication. You would think that giving land to the state is easy, but it's not an easy process. So where we are now with both the state and the county, we are in the permit process now. So we've gotten conceptual approvals, and we're now into the detailed design permit process. As I said, we will be aligning, realigning the intersection to improve the traffic flowing through the intersection, upgrading the signal. The DOT in their last letter indicated that they may want even more signal upgrades, which we're happy to do. It will improve the efficiency of the intersection. Two last things that I'd like to mention. First of all, this type of use attracts from the existing traffic stream. As everybody knows, this intersection has high traffic volumes. It has over 1,800 vehicles an hour that pass through this intersection today, or pre-pandemic, I should say. In terms of the attraction of those trips, that's a, what's called either a bypass or a diverted trip from the system. In terms of the improvements that we're making, we will make the operation equal or better than it is today because of the alignment changes and the signal upgrades. Those are really the key findings of our study, and as I said, we have both conceptual approval from both agencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Keith Schofield from Lisko McCormick and Vorus Architects. To refresh where we've come from, in talking about the building architecture, we did a study of the region of around this main intersection of the Hamlet of Houstonville. Our building, of course, is right here on the northwest side of the intersection. And so all the pictures that you see along this are each of the properties that are highlighted with an orange rectangle showing a street number that coincides with those buildings. What we had done with that is we had taken the information to determine siding materials, any masonry involved, asphalt root shingles, window types, styles. All that information came from basically looking at what was done on all these buildings, even including roof, different roof profiles. I know we proposed a hip roof similar to the gray building on the corner of the intersection, and then we explored gable roofs and dormers. So what it did, and I'll show you the current plan, is elevations. It's carrying on the characteristics that were most prevalent in the Houstonville area, and that was a clavard siding. Many buildings had masonry, and we steered towards a cultured stone for a base. A lot of double-hung windows. Asphalt shingles were predominant throughout the area, and we went with gable roofs on this and included a couple dormers to give it the residential feel. We have on the first floor, of course, larger glass to emphasize the commercial portion of the building is on grade level, and the residential is on the second floor. We picked up porticoes and roof overhangs and everything from all adjacent architecture. I've enlarged some of the buildings that were on my study, just so you had an idea, and this being the one on the property now, so it's supposedly dated back to 1870s but gone through plenty of renovations and additions. I believe there was one in 1900, one 1936, 1968, and 2000. So the original character of maybe what the original historical portion of the building isn't necessarily a predominant factor in the elevations today. These are also facing the Route 9D portion, the old bar, which has got a lot of the facade materials falling from it and disarray, some buckle of the siding, and are very close to the road, which causes a little bit of a danger. You go a little bit farther north, we have a gasoline or auto body shop, and that's on the corner of Marlerville Road. You go a little further north on the opposite side of the street, we have a residential structure and what appears to be a commercial barn storage facility. structure and what appears to be a commercial barn storage facility. One more additional residential building, and where this also helps is it ties in that we do have elevated rear balconies facing the street on New Hamburg Road in our proposed This is the building I was referring to on the corner of New Hamburg and Old Hopewell Road, in which we really took a lot of our architectural imagery from as far as the portico entrance and the double-hung windows, the asphalt roof. This one, although with a hip roof, we decided to go with your recommendation more towards a gable roof, which there are also plenty of in the town. This is on the southeast side of the intersection. And again, a lot of these properties, I think with the nice architecture that we're proposing could help spur maybe a little revitalization on the ones that have a little bit of need of care. The one next to the basket shop on the southwest side. Again, it's been here forever, but the colors, not necessarily everybody's favorite, same thing. But you get the point of what I'm getting at. So, it was basically... We're just pointing out that we're trying to do our best with what we can and hope to spur other things and be positive with the project. And that's all, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
We're available to answer any questions you may have, or I presume you'll proceed to the hearing in the public.
Yeah, well, maybe we'll start by seeing if the board members have any specific questions that they want to bring up tonight before we open this up to the public to get their comments and concerns.
Not yet.
I have a question to our lawyer. Does this meet the comprehensive plan that he had said that it meets?
I'm sorry?
Does this meet the comprehensive plan that he said it meets? Everything he proposed, does that meet the comprehensive plan?
Well, that would be a consideration you're going to have to make as far as your deliberation and whether you're going to approve the plan or not, would be to compare all those aspects of it.
Okay. Now, if we want to make changes to the access to the properties as far as the turning lanes, do we have that availability to us in the future? Because what they proposed, excuse me, on Route 9, is something we'd like to see changed. Is now the appropriate time to discuss that, or is that time at the next meeting?
No, usually what you would do is you can make comments. Tonight, the public will comment on what's been presented, and then you still have the availability to the board to make additional comments and to ask for modifications.
Because what he had said earlier, not this gentleman, but the other gentleman that spoke about the traffic study, is then that he made permits to the state, but if the state, we have some ideas that we'd like to see done.
Right.
And if he made these suggestions to the state, and they're going to give him permits to do that, are we going to be able to make these changes later on?
You'd be able to make comments on what he's proposing now and what the state has reviewed.
But if the state already given him a permit to do this?
No, there's no permit. They have a conceptual...
Permission, whatever.
They have a conceptual approval from the DOT, which means that if this project's approved, we would approve the curb cuts and the modifications to the road. But that's not a highway work permit, hasn't been issued yet.
No, thanks, Ben. So, we have some ideas that we'd like to see, we can still do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, maybe I can add something, Bruce, to this, to...
You want to, yeah, I was going to say, if you want to go ahead and expand on it.
So, Ralph, to that end, we've had some discussions ourselves, you know, the town, and I had reached out to the County Department of Public Works. Because one of the concerns that the town's traffic consultant brought up was the aligning of, you know, the intersection with both Old Hopewell Road and New Hamburg Road, because right now it's, right now the approaches are offset, and the left turns have to, one has to make a left turn at once, wait, and then the other one has to make their left turn. So, what's going to happen is the town's traffic consultant is going to be present and have discussions with both the county and the State Department of Transportation to ensure that any concerns that the town has is taken into account as they go through, you know, the permitting process. Now, their traffic engineer had said that they're already going to be aligning, you know, the intersection, changing, you know, the traffic light, and that was reinforced based upon a letter that the applicants had mentioned that was received by the Department of Transportation. So, we recognize, you know, the town recognizes that this is, this is the one opportunity in order to, you know, improve that whole intersection traffic-wise, and now is the opportune time, you know, to do it if the project does, in fact, like, proceed. So, anything else that, you know, the planning board may have that affects anything within, you know, the right-of-way, that should be, like, conveyed to, you know, the consultants, and then we will make sure that it's followed through during the permitting process. So, hopefully that...
Then you need to talk to us a little sooner than, because some of our ideas are maybe not the same as yours. Because we'd like to see a turn lane maybe off of Route 9 into this project as well. Everything is based on safety, and you guys are on the same page.
Right.
You know, so these are some things we'd like to see done as well.
Right.
Now, I agree that, you know, the county road needs to be straightened out, that's a necessity, but we'd like to see something done on the Route 9 end of it as well.
Okay, well, those are all things that, you know, we'll need to know, and then the town's traffic, you know, consultant can, you know, take that into account, you know, and discuss that as they're moving through the process.
Okay.
One question I had is, you mentioned about the traffic lights. What does that, does that entail? Is that like, where they put new software in them so they sync up, or what do they actually do?
So, Philip Greeley, again, from Kaya's Engineering and Design. The upgrades to the traffic signal include new actuation to be more responsive to the actual demands on each approach and each lane, new software. Most recently, DOT has gone to camera detection, and in this case, they haven't specified that in their letter from Friday, April 30th. They said that they would inform us if they were going to require that and/or any other upgrades. But it's basically software, as well as some hardware, to be more responsive to the flows that are there. As I said, we have very high volumes, but they vary, you know, over the course of the day, even over the course of a cycle. So, the software makes it more responsive to individual demands within, for example, when the train comes in on New Hamburg Road, you get a surge of traffic. So, rather than set that for the entire hour, that same amount of time, it can adjust to the actual loadings by cycle. So, it makes it more efficient. And just to further your question about the turn lane on Route 9D, the DOT decided that they wanted it to be a right turn in, right turn out. However, for left turns coming from the south on Route 9D or the west on Route 9D, they would be making a left turn at the signal, and then a right turn into the driveway on New Hamburg Road. So, if you're coming, you know, from that direction, you would use the signalized intersection to make that left turn move.
Is that at any time during the day?
Yes. So, in terms of getting to the site, in terms of a left turn movement, any time of the day.
Any time of the day.
The restriction that the county suggested on the driveway on New Hamburg Road was that between 4:00 and 6:00, coincident when traffic is coming back from the train station, that they would like to prohibit left turns exiting the site.
So, they're going to police that? Is that their plan?
So, similar to other locations in the county on the county road, it's done by signing that restricts it, so it's enforceable. And then they would continue to monitor it to see if that could be lifted in the future. But essentially, it's when the surge from the train comes on New Hamburg Road that the queue backs up significantly past that area, and they didn't want to have people try to make a left turn out during that time period.
So, how are you going to police the traffic from cutting through the gas station to go down to the train station? What is your plan for that?
Okay, so, the alignment within the gas station, there is a raised island where the fueling occurs, where the tanker would be making its delivery to the tanks. So, there is a raised island there to make it more securitous if anybody was trying to cut through the gas station.
Well, you know people are going to cut through.
And then the other things that we would do would be to work in some other traffic coming, you know, raised areas.
Speed bumps, is that what you're saying?
Well, not necessarily speed bumps or speed humps or speed bumps, something of that nature, so that we don't, we don't want people cutting through there, especially at any speed.
Or everybody's going to try to avoid the light.
Understood. So, the idea is to make it more securitous, to bring them up and around, near the pump islands, there's going to be usage there. But there would be this raised island where the tanker delivers, and then on the far side where the driveway comes out to New Hamburg Road, some type of traffic coming, whether it's speed bump, speed hump, to slow vehicles down.
Because I'd like to see something as a deterrent in that particular area.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We don't want, you know, cut through traffic through the site.
Because they're going to do it.
Yes. And then as part of our widening, we're also improving the pavement along Route 9D, turning onto New Hamburg Road also. That's part of what we're doing there. But I think Pete gave a good summary of process with the DOT. Any other input that you have, we'll work it into the permits. They've just given conceptual approval, and for example, on the alignment, we're looking at even, we were widening along our frontage to get a better alignment coming across the intersection. We may be able to do a little bit more widening to make it even softer, so.
A little softer is better.
Thank you very much.
It says here that under the traffic study, that a capacity analysis was conducted, I'm just reading the bottom here, was conducted for this intersection utilizing the 2019 existing traffic volumes. The analysis results indicate that the intersection is currently operating in the overall level service of D during the AM and PM peak hours, and several movements operate a level service of ENF during peak hours as it approaches peak periods. Does what we just talked about address this?
Yes.
That is another one that would be provided to us to...
Yes. That's existing, and there's also in that document has the build with the improvements. And some of the additional updates that I was referencing, that DOT in their April 30th letter, they're asking for some additional upgrades to the signal, which will make it even more efficient, so that'll be worked into the final permit.
Will we just talk in north and south? But I thought I read a...
No. It would cover the whole, yes, yes.
I got a quick question. So, between 4:00 and 6:00, once you're in that gas station, you cannot head north on 9D?
To head north on 9D, you would have to exit to make a right turn and then make a U-turn, or you could make a right turn onto Route 9D, head south, and make a U-turn further to the south, or you could make a right turn onto 9D and head east on, if you were going on Old Hopewell. But to head north on 9D, you would have, during that time period, you would have to make a U-turn. That's correct. And at most of the other locations where this is put into effect, you know, there are other gas stations along this section of highway, you know, on your route, so people tend to get used to those restrictions, and it's only during that time period because of the train traffic.
It just seems very difficult to get back on 9D north.
Yes, it will be, and essentially...
And New Hamburg Road is not someplace that has a bunch of places to turn.
Correct, correct. So, you know, we look at during that time period that we will lose some of those customers, because, you know, people coming from the north will turn in and will be able to get out. People wanting to go to the west on New Hamburg Road will have it very easily to do, but heading back north will be difficult during that time period.
One other thing, he had mentioned that people are going to be making a right-hand turn on New Hamburg Road at that timeframe, 4:00 to 6:00. So, they're going to be turning around, making that U-turn in people's driveways or wherever they can, and I don't think that's fair to the people that live on that road to have people making U-turns in their property.
Yeah, so...
So, how are you going to put this under some form of control? Because nobody wants people turning around in their yards.
Absolutely. So, in terms of the county requirement to not have left turns out of there, first of all, we've asked to re-study it to see if we can get that restriction lifted, okay? In terms of the U-turns, you're not permitted to make U-turns there. They would have to go down to Wheeler Hill, or they would have to go out onto 9D and make a U-turn somewhere down there. But we're assuming that we're going to lose that, the people that want to head back north, we're going to lose a percentage of our customers during that time period.
I think before, I think before that you go ahead and make all these decisions, that you need to get something solid from the county that states that, because people are not going to abide by what you assume. They're going to turn around in these people's properties, they're going to be making U-turns wherever they want, or they're just going to cut across the road. So, that's not even practical, what you're saying, because that's not how it's going to happen.
During those peak times, we're going to have the restriction, and we'll work with the county on those restrictions.
But they're not being practical at this particular time. You know, if you lived on that road, would you want that to be your, you'd want that for you?
Understood. We would prefer not to have any restriction.
I understand.
But it's because of the current condition. We will improve that condition with our upgrades, so we're, you know...
Hopefully with these new upgrades, maybe we can figure something out.
Understood. Thank you. We'll revisit that with the county. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Well, I think I'm all right for right now.
All right.
Give me 10 minutes.
So, it's, we're going to go ahead and open up for comments from the public. Everybody is, we're going to go through the sign-in sheet. First person this evening is George Silvestri. Step up to the mic. And we're limiting comments to three minutes this evening.
My name's George Silvestri. I live in the corner of Old Hopewell and Dean Avenue, and I agree with the people here talking about the traffic. It's terrible. I spent five or 10 minutes trying to get out of Dean Avenue tonight to come to this meeting. And also, I want to speak about the, if there's any spillage on this property, do they have provisions to stop it? Because you have an organic farm downhill from that property. If the gas ever reached that, it would wipe that place out. And I think there should be a big provision made for the containment of this, even if you only trucked it could spill it. And your drainage water also would carry oil and... And your drainage water also would carry oil and gas in it too, so I think they should look at, I myself, I feel they shouldn't have a gas station put there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please hold the applause, just so we can get through the evening. Trying to, I can't make out the handwriting, but John, John Bohunick, 16 Booth Boulevard.
Hi. Hi, my name's John Bohunick. I live at 16 Booth Boulevard. While I live in the Chelsea hamlet, I was asked by Houstonville residents to speak on the historical preservation of their hamlet. I'm a high school history teacher. I teach APUS history. I also have a bachelor's in history from the University of New Paltz. When we see development as a way to build on our past, that development benefits not only the residents and businesses today, but future generations who will one day call Houstonville their home. The County Greenway Compact and the town, that the town of Wapanger is a member of, and whose policies help guide our town comprehensive plan, have at their heart a pledge to align local history and community characteristics with new development. These plans recognize the historical, environmental, and community characteristics of an area as essential economic variables. Development should be in alignment with these variables, as such alignment not only benefits the community, but leads to long-term economic growth of the entire region. The current project is out of scale, out of context, and out of alignment with the historic hamlet of Houstonville. Houstonville has a rich history of agricultural, commercial, and cultural activities. Its location along the Hudson River and the Wapanger Creek led to the hamlet becoming a gateway of commerce for this area, with a shipping port established at Farmers Landing in the mid-1700s. By the mid-19th century, the Presbyterian Church, the building that today is the nesting doll shop, and many other commercial and residential structures around the intersection of 9D and New Hamburg Road were constructed. This proposal is at the heart of that intersection. Homes and buildings are standing in that intersection and throughout the hamlet that date back to the late 18th and early 19th century. The home at 23759D dates back to the late 1700s and was once owned by the Houston family who founded the hamlet. The building at 23669D, which today is McGuire's Top-to-Bottom Cleaning Service, also dates back to the late 1700s. And there are 10 other buildings at that very intersection, all built in the mid-1800s, which still stand today. Homes and buildings that have been beautifully kept up and restored. And throughout the hamlet, from Cornwath to Ober Creek Farms and Ober Creek Brewery and our lovely Victorian homes, they have been revitalized and developed in alignment with our history. This hamlet is already being revitalized. The worn-down buildings currently standing on the site of this proposed development are the exception to the historical and community characteristics of this hamlet, not the norm. The revitalization of this intersection is the final piece missing, from Houstonville once again becoming a gateway of commerce in this area, a gateway that can serve as an economic corridor connecting Beaking and Fishkill to the village of Wapanger's Falls. And here's the thing about history, it's not a story of our past, it's an argument of who we are today. These buildings stand today not because of those who constructed them. This community strives today not because of those who founded it. These beautiful homes stand, and this wonderful community thrives because of the hard work of generation after generation of Houstonville residents, folks who understood the value of this area's historical development and community characteristics. They built with our history, not on top of it. They built for all of our futures, not just their own. The minute this project goes through, our history lost, and our wrong future will be written. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Initially, Linda, 16 Booth Boulevard.
Yeah, I gave her my time.
Yeah, what? She gave her time. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. All right, we're good now. All right. Ben Admiston, 73 Losi Road.
Hello, my name is Ben Admiston. I live at 73 Losi Road. I just wanted to talk about how I think if this proposal goes through, it would be setting a bad precedent for the future of the town. This location borders a residential district, and if the special permit is granted, I don't see why any other gas station in the future, or gas stations who have previously applied and got denied because of the previous zoning protections we had that are no longer in place, they'll just say, well, you approved this gas station, a brand-new one in a residential, right next bordering a residential district, so why can't my gas station go up? And then I'm like afraid that there will just be gas stations everywhere. So I'm asking, please issue a positive declaration, don't let this project go through whatever kind of legal ground you have. If you find something small, just please like latch on to it, because I'm worried that they're making a really ridiculous proposal with like, it's not a good plan, and it's so outrageous that they'll, we'll have a bunch of these meetings and they'll appear to be making concessions, but it was just because they started with a super ridiculous project, and then they'll say, oh, we'll have a four-pump gas station, not a big deal, but I don't think anybody wants a gas station there. So I'm just asking, please, if there's some kind of, I know a special permit, I know you're bound by certain things, and it doesn't appear that the town board's going to put those resolutions back in place. So if you can find any kind of thing, I think there's a 75-foot setback zoning regulation that they'll be going against, and if you could just use that and try to not let this go through, that's, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you, and just please try to stop this project.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Pamela Kingsley, 9 Conklin Street.
Hi, I'm Pam Kingsley, and I'll be reading a letter from Cenick Hudson. Cenick Hudson has recently been made aware that an application has been submitted for a large 24-hour convenience store and gas station in the heart of the historic hamlet of Houstonville on parcels, zone, hamlet mix use. We are unable to attend this evening's public hearing, but request that you read this letter into the record. As you know, the hamlet of Houstonville is a historic crossroads, and as such, future development at this location warrants careful consideration. Dutchess County's Centers and Green Spaces Plan describes Houstonville as, quote, "a small historic hamlet that has become dominated by traffic due to a lack of sidewalks, heavy volumes on Route 9D, and cars going to the nearby New Hamburg train station." The town plan included a Houstonville concept plan to address these issues, but it has proved difficult to implement, unquote. In fact, the Town of Wapanger Comprehensive Plan cites as an objective the need to, quote, "develop Houstonville as a vibrant, traditional town/village center," unquote. Further, the Plan's section on community character and appearance cites Houstonville as, quote, "an existing center of activity that can be enhanced and redesigned to promote community character in the town," unquote. Cenick Hudson believes that the construction of a large 24-hour multi-bay convenience store/gas station would undermine these and other objectives of the comprehensive plan. The construction of a large gas station at this intersection would make it ever more difficult, if not impossible, to create an activity center that functions as a walkable hamlet or promote Houstonville's community character as the plan intends. Further, while Wapanger's zoning code permits gas stations in the mixed-use district, the requirement of a special permit acknowledges the fact that not all sites in the district are appropriate for a gas station. Our review of the application finds that the applicant has not demonstrated in a statement of use that the proposed use will serve to implement the purposes of the special permit as required by town code. Given this, Cenick Hudson urges the planning board deny this application for a special permit. If the town decides to further consider this application, we recommend that due to the site's location in the historic hamlet and proximity to the Wheeler Hill National Registered District, a positive declaration should be made under SICER, and a full environmental impact statement prepared, including the development of alternatives so that impacts to the environment can be avoided, reduced, or mitigated. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Jeffrey N. Savino, Director of Land Use Advocacy, Cenick Hudson. Thank you.
It's Val Furcros, 22 Scottsey Road.
That's me.
Come on up to the podium.
Good evening. Okay, so first, I wanted to bring to attention to the board, we have every reason to believe that actually there are human remains on the property in question. The original owner, Vera Ward, has a granddaughter who lives in the area, Lori Schneider, and she, as a youngster, as well as one of her cohorts, I would say, Stephen Christie and possibly others, witnessed a tombstone, a flat carved engraved marker on the property. They were shocked by this, possibly entertained, but they were told by family members to cover it up and not to disturb it. Hannah Lent, it appears, who is also the wife of William H. Lent of the Lent family of this area, died there at the age of 48 years in 1897. There is a marker there, and it is incumbent on the board and the planning board and the town board to look into this and verify the existence of this marker and the remains that likely lay there. I'd also like to just gather a little perspective here for a moment. The reason that you're seeing, one of the reasons that you're seeing that people are not very happy about the idea of this Gasland proposal is the scale. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the mobile station on the corner of 93 and Route 9, right by Hannaford. A little over .9 acres with a convenience store. Just up the street from that Speedway, .55 acres with a convenience store. Gasland's proposal in Houstonville, little hamlet, 1.77 acres. Does that sound like the right size to be putting in? Reason I mention that is because, as the Gasland attorney mentioned, Greenway Connection, Paragraph D, 240-2.1, the town board hereby finds that any town reviewing board, including but not limited to the planning board and zoning board of appeals, in its deliberations on any discretionary action, I guess that would be a special use permit, under the zoning law, shall, not might, shall consider the statement of policies, principles, and guidelines in Greenway Connections, as such reviewing board deems appropriate and relevant in its determinations on such discretionary actions. Special use permit is not granted by right. It doesn't have to be allowed. So I'd simply like to add this. A special use permit might be granted when a plan would be technically outside the zoning law but represents no particular harm or downside. It can't reasonably be issued when there is no upside and there is enormous downside, when there is significant detriment to the community. Well, right there are numerous reasons not to allow this plan to proceed. I haven't heard even one word about any justification to allow this. It becomes the planning board's responsibility to use their discretion to put a stop to this, which you do have the right to do. You can use your discretion, as per the Greenway Plan, to evaluate this on its merits with respect to the community. So I would encourage the planning board needs to act not as a rubber stamping board, but to serve their community. I won't make assumptions as to what your decision might render, what decision you might render. It's quite obvious to everyone here what you can and should do, but I will say that any board that would allow this to proceed isn't serving their community.
Thank you.
And their members don't belong on a board, they should be pumping gas, just not in Houstonville. Thank you.
Okay. Next person we have is Ron Evangelista, 2320 Route 9D.
My name is Ron Evangelista, 2320 Route 9D, Houstonville, for 46 years. This proposed gas station project will have serious negative impacts upon the hamlet of Houstonville. This hamlet is historic, very sensitive, important to the town, and that is stated in the Town Comprehensive Plan, the Town Zoning Code, and in the Dutchess County Greenway Compact Plan, all of those documents. I'd like to start off and clarify one comment during the earlier discussion presentation. This gentleman on the board asked the traffic engineer to clarify a point about the county no-left turns. That was a concern, we agree with that. I contacted the county, the gentleman who authored that letter, county DPW, he said there's been no such discussion or agreement to revisit those restricted left-hand turns in the future. There's no such discussion on the table with them.
Can you get us a copy of that letter?
I didn't get a letter, it was a phone discussion, but I'd be happy to put that in writing to you.
Okay.
Sure. Will do. Thank you. The planning board can avail itself of a number of reasons to deny this application. This is, this must be approved, as has already been noted by a special use permit. The gas station itself is not a permitted principal use. It's not an as-of right, and this project really does not fit within the middle of a mainly residential, very historic hamlet. The planning board has no obligation or, excuse me, no obligation to approve this project. The entire community, everyone that I've spoken to, is against this project. It's in direct, the project is in direct conflict with the stated purposes of those documents I mentioned before, the comprehensive plan and so on. It contradicts, the project contradicts the town codes, I'm going to enumerate some numbers. 240-2, all paragraphs A through L, which is the purpose, to preserve the existing historic character and protect the hamlet of Houstonville. Zoning 240-2.1, the Greenway Connections adoption, which talks about the importance of Houstonville. Zoning 240-7B3, hamlet mix zone to preserve the historical character of the town, and in particular, the hamlet of Houstonville. And zoning 240-43A1B, the formal application process for the special use permit, and there's no indication that this meets those requirements there. As stated in the applicant's documents, the planning board, this gasoline station will and convenience store are intended to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Holidays, they're not taking off holidays or anything. This is a heck of an unacceptable, unreasonable business model to impose on a mainly residential, very historic community. There's already a convenience store in the hamlet, there are five other delis within a mile, and three other gas stations within a mile. The gas station project violates the Town Code, Section 240, Attachment 4, relative to a 75-foot front yard setback from both the state road and the county road. They're asking for an 18-foot setback from the state right-of-way and a 28-foot setback from the county right-of-way. This board really should not, or whether it's your board or the zoning board of appeals, should not approve that.
Yeah, we're not responsible for the setbacks. I mean, that was as a recommendation by, you know, by the planner to have it there to match what the, you know, what's within the current district.
But that's still, so it would go to the zoning board of appeals, it's still within your code requirements, that it'd be 75-foot setback.
If you have your comments in writing, I mean, we've given you the three minutes.
So you won't allow any more than that? Okay.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of people this evening, and I gotta, we gotta move it on. If you have it in writing, please.
I will submit it to Bea. Bea's been very kind and considerate and very helpful.
Thank you. Okay. Please, please, can we hold the applause? Thank you. All right. Next person is Robin Lucari, 15 Red Hawk Hollow.
Hi, I'm Robin Lucari, and I live at 15 Red Hawk Hollow Road in Wapinders Falls. I'm here tonight to talk about the zoning change to 240-52 on gas filling stations that occurred on March 11, 2019, and again on November 13, 2019, because I believe that we would not be in front of the planning board tonight if these changes had not occurred. On March 11, 2019, the town board, which consists of our town council persons and town supervisor unanimously decided to amend zoning code 240-52 by imposing Local Law Number The town board eliminated the section in zoning code 240-52 that stated, quote, "No gasoline station shall be within 1,000 feet of the boundary line of any residential district or of any school, church, park, playground, hospital, public library, institution for dependents or children, or any place of public assembly designed for the simultaneous use of 100 persons or more." They also eliminated the section that said there shall be a minimum of 2,500 feet between gasoline filling stations. The current town code has no stipulations regarding how close gas stations can build next to residences or about how many gas stations can be built within a given area. Literally, there could be a gas station now on every corner. So why the changes? Well, we've tried to get an explanation. We sent a four-page letter to the town supervisor. There was no response, and so I guess we're left to make our own conclusions as far as why this has happened. Well, Gasland Petroleum is known today as one of the largest independent wholesale petroleum distributors in New York's mid-Hudson Valley region. Maji Nishiwat and Zaidan Nishiwat have given tens of thousands of dollars to political committees and candidates in Dutchess County. I think Zaidan Nishiwat states clearly what happened in an article titled "Turning Eyesore's Into State-of-the-Art Sea Stores," which means convenience stores, and that was listed in Convenience Store News. Zaidan states, "It's not a matter of whether the municipality desires a site to be remediated, it's a matter of what zoning currently permits. Prior to redeveloping a site, a thorough zoning analysis is performed to bring to light any significant issues that may exist, such as acquiring variances, approvals, or zoning changes." So on November 13, 2019, the town board again unanimously decides to amend zoning code 240-52 by Local Law 6, to include that, quote, "Use of a building for any resident or sleeping quarter shall not be permitted except that in a hamlet mixed-use district." Houstonville was that hamlet mixed-use zone, and the site plan included apartments over the gas station. Eight weeks later, on January 8, Gasland Petroleum presents the Town of Wapinders with a completed full environmental assessment form and files an application to build a 24/7 gas station convenience store in the heart of Houstonville. Without these changes in zoning code 240-52, residential districts would have been too close for Gasland to build. Without these changes, Gasland would not be allowed to build apartments over their gas station. Town of Wapinders residents have been stripped of their protections from gas stations being built close to each other and close to the residential districts.
Is this, this is all written, it's all written out statement that you have, I mean, could be submitted to the secretary?
I can submit, I can submit it. So anyways, I'm done. I just want to say, we're encouraging the planning board to give a positive declaration regarding this application due to the potential for significant environmental impacts regarding traffic, possibility of contamination of shallow wells, and the destruction of a historic hamlet. I just want to say, tonight we have here Emily Svenson, who Houstonville, the Houstonville residents hired her. I'd like to give her more than the three minutes, okay? She also, the Houstonville residents paid to do their own traffic study, okay? Cost a lot of money.
No, I understand. I mean, you have, remember, we've set the ground rules this evening for three minutes. Again, it's, you know, there's a lot of things being said tonight. We need things documented. If they're given to the secretary, again, we are going to review them. If anybody wants to speak, you know, about something, instead of a long-drawn-out speech, you just hit the highlights of it, because, I mean, and I know that we do have, traffic is probably the biggest issue that everybody has this evening. We're just, again, you know, I'm on page...
But she represents a lot of people.
I'm on page one of, you know...
Okay.
I think I'm...
I think we're doing great, actually.
I got quite a few here. So I have quite a few people that need to get through tonight, and again, it's...
Please give Emily more time. She represents a lot of people. Thank you.
All right. Now, please, can you hold the applause? Thank you. All right. So our next person who wishes to speak this evening is Kathleen Daly, 58 Degarmo Hill Road.
I decline to speak right now.
Do what?
I decline to speak right now.
Oh, you're declining now? Okay. Okay. Molly Finnegan, 7 Marlerville Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Molly Finnegan, and I reside at 7 Marlerville Road. It's the abutting property to this proposal. I'm going to read a couple of index numbers in hopes that you recognize them. Do any of them have any importance to you? As I am sure you're aware by now, these are just a few of the current lawsuits that are publicly available brought against Gasland Petroleum by residents of Dutchess County. These do not include the dozens of others brought by residents of surrounding counties such as West Chester, Ulster, and so on, in just the past 36 months, nor does it include the multitude of lawsuits brought against individuals and entities of our community by Gasland Petroleum themselves. I am hopeful that prior to ever even considering approving a corporation such as themselves into our historical hamlet of Houstonville, you at least did a basic preliminary search similar to the one that I did. I am confident that at the very least, we can all agree that Gasland Petroleum have proven themselves to be highly litigious. They generate an unfair burden on our community's time and resources. I believe that their failures are further overburdening our court system, which is already struggling to maintain its capacity in the midst of a global pandemic. At their worst, however, I consider the sheer amount of allegations to demonstrate Gasland Petroleum's degree of extreme negligence, recklessness, carelessness, and wanton disregard for the safety and well-being of our community. Fellow residents of Dutchess County have suffered at the hands of a corporation that, based off the profusion of suits, probably prioritizes making a profit over the welfare of its patrons. It is my hope that you will not do the same. If you were to approve Gasland Petroleum's proposal, you would knowingly and intentionally be putting the residents of Dutchess County in danger. Considering the notice you have been given of the foreseeable risk Gasland Petroleum poses, I believe it will now leave the town also open to share in that liability as well. Speaking for myself, I do not want my taxes going to supplement gas and settlements. You have a duty to act thoughtfully and carefully...
Mr. Chairman, if you have to, the Gasland is not before this application. It's not appropriate for...
Okay. Let her...
I believe it speaks...
Give her 30 seconds, and we'll, we'll give her 30 seconds, and we're done.
I'm finishing.
I'm on my last one, and I just think that it speaks on the welfare.
It's not appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
You have a duty to act thoughtfully and carefully in the best interest of the town. The fact that this proposal is still being considered leads me to believe that you have not done so thus far, but that can be remedied by disapproving their permit. We deserve better than this. My parents deserve better than this. Everyone in this room deserves better than this, and this town deserves better than this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Please, again, if we could hold the applause in here. Our next, next person who wishes to speak this evening is Bill Beal, 45 Tuscany Drive.
Mr. Chairman, your comments just made are entirely inappropriate. Gasland operates within the importance of the law, has a very good environmental record, and we'll submit that against any other company. We'll put that in this record. But more importantly, it's not before this board. These comments shouldn't be allowed. It's what's allowed under zoning. We're allowed to do it. It is just baseless character assassination to try to sensationalize what is before tonight. I find it inappropriate.
Yes, we will, we will review everything that's been discussed this evening.
Mr. Chairman? First and foremost, I wholeheartedly object to the applicant's attorney's absurd allegation that I have no right to meet with my constituents, especially about a project with this much level of public interest. This gathering of neighbors was not a public meeting, contained no quorum, and was designed to be for informational purposes, and it was just that. To claim that an open community meeting is, quote, "impermissible" goes against the foundations of our democratic society. It's absurd. As the elected town official representing Houstonville, it's my duty to listen to my constituents. I've been contacted by scores of residents with concerns about this gas station to be situated at the crossroads, 9D New Hamburg Road. As I'm sure you will hear tonight, there are significant concerns with the location of this proposed site, the scale of the project, the potential negative impacts upon our environment, and as our elected representative, I've had the opportunity to meet with many of these residents and hear their concerns directly, and found that I do share many of these same concerns. And despite gross misinformation being disseminated about this project by certain individuals and certain organizations, I've ensured the residents that this process is far from a done deal, as some have claimed. The town planning board has the statutory responsibilities to determine that all legitimate concerns are addressed, all legal requirements are satisfied, and all stipulations are met. I would ask the planning board to please seriously deliberate the following key issues: traffic, environmental impacts, and overall community character. I believe traffic to be paramount at this major intersection, which on an average day, when there is not a pandemic going on, can see 19,000 cars a day. To suggest U-turns are appropriate is absurd. Traffic is a significant concern. The most recent plan shows vehicular flow entering and exiting the gas station from a southbound direction only onto Route 9D. Vehicular flow is also shown exiting the gas station onto New Hamburg Road westbound with a timeframe restriction on exiting eastbound traffic onto New Hamburg Road. How does a vehicle get to Route 9D northbound during the time restriction? With commuter train traffic returning in the near future, how accessible would New Hamburg Road's entrance and exit actually be? This needs to go back to the drawing board, in my opinion. How will this traffic flow pattern affect ingress and egress of gasoline tankers? Are gasoline tankers going to be able to navigate this traffic pattern? Please, I ask the planning board to take a look at this again. My time has expired. Thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker will be Peter Garrity, 5 Conklin Street.
Chairman, just to give you some record, that Mr. Beal's commentary on inappropriate and impermissible bias, it's absurd, he suggested an informational medium, which he opposed the project more times, was just that.
Is that crosstalk? Sorry. Sir, if anyone else is saying how bad the...
Gentlemen, my name is Peter Garrity. I live at 5 Conklin Street in New Hamburg. I'm not going to engage in any more crosstalk. Mr. Ward Willis has done enough of that. I just would like to beg for common sense. Who wants the Gasland gas station? Who wants it? I don't know. I can't figure that out. I'm here as a resident of New Hamburg, and I'm an artist, and I love old stuff, right? I'm probably the oldest person in this room, I believe. I, I'm in, I live in New Hamburg because of Houstonville. When my wife and I were driving around 12 years ago looking for a house to buy, we tried Cold Spring, too many day trippers. We tried Beacon, couldn't find a house. Driving up here on 9D after a couple of hours, days of searching, and we saw something that the, I think the architect showed photographs, photograph after photograph after photograph, and he finally came to a photograph of the nesting dolls, and he made a disparaging remark about, well, who would like that? I mean, nobody really would, nobody really probably cares about that color scheme. I saw the nesting dolls 12 years ago, and I turned left. There was something about it. It was interesting. I have since met Frank and Elaine. They go all over the world searching for their dolls. It's a unique place, and Frank is an incredible gardener, and he has, they're creative, wonderful people. This thing is going to be right across the street from them if it gets built. I say use common sense. It should not get built. This just should not be there. The business about, here we are in the middle of a pandemic, and we have, and we have all this traffic, and we're saying, okay, maybe a year from now, there's going to be a gas station there? And the engineer making the pitch was saying, oh, we can make U-turns? And Mr. Ward Willis over here was saying, this is going to be great because we're going to put in sidewalks. Any hamlet needs sidewalks. I assume they're just going to put in sidewalks around that piece of property. They're not sidewalking the entire hamlet of Houstonville. And then, you see, we're putting apartments above the gas station. Who wants to live in those apartments above the gas station? Do any of the officers of Gasland want to install their kids up there, for instance, as a, as a, while they're going to school or something like that? It's a terrible idea. And then the gentleman who was the, who was the engineer, I believe I get these titles wrong, I'm sure, but the gentleman who was the engineer was talking about, in conversation with this gentleman, was saying, okay, well, what about cut-throughs, right? What about people who are cutting through from 9D to Houstonville Road? Oh, well, we'll put speed bumps. We'll put speed bumps there. We're going to have different islands, and we're going to make it difficult for people. Well, what does that do to the people that are walking so nicely, jauntily on the sidewalks? You know? I mean, it's just, there's nothing about this project that enhances the quality of life for the residents of Houstonville or any of the surrounding hamlets. This is a beautiful place. My building, my house I bought was built in 1790. I love old stuff. Keep Houstonville, Houstonville.
Okay.
My name is Emily Svenson. I'm an attorney in Poughkeepsie, and I represent a large group of residents in and around Houstonville who strongly oppose the gas station. Thank you all, planning board members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. In short, the gas, a gas station is the wrong use for this location. It would destroy the historic character and the future potential of Houstonville, and it would worsen already serious traffic congestion along with numerous other negative impacts. We call on the planning board to apply the law and deny the project. Thanks so much for passing out my letters. You're receiving a letter from my office and also a letter from our traffic engineer, Lee Klein, who's a professional traffic engineer. The letter has three sections. One, how the project fails to comply with the zoning. Second, the environmental impacts of the project, which require a positive declaration under Seeker. And third, the reasons the project application should be denied. I'd like to summarize a few of the impacts. First of all, the Houstonville hamlet is a historic hamlet. It's a great place to live. It's much loved by its residents, and frankly, my clients and other residents are a little tired of it being portrayed as shabby and rundown. That's not how they feel about Houstonville. It's not how the town feels about Houstonville. The town's comprehensive plan features a future plan for Houstonville that envisions an improved street system with trees, pedestrian amenities, and shared parking to create an attractive commercial center. That plan is in Exhibit C of my letter. The zoning says that buildings should be renovated and reused. That's the vision that the town has for Houstonville. Citing a large gas station would destroy Houstonville's character... Citing a large gas station would destroy Houstonville's character and would run directly contrary to those town goals. It would place a car-oriented use with expansive parking areas at a prominent location. It would destroy the historic integrity of the intersection and would preclude the potential for an attractive walkable business district. And the county agrees, I have a quote in there that you've received from the county planning department, where they say that this location is not likely to be the right place for a gas station. The traffic report that we submitted shows that, as you know, this intersection is a terrible traffic problem already, right? And the town wants to improve that. There's no reason that you should approve a project that's only going to make the traffic condition worse. The traffic report that we submitted reviews the applicant's traffic data and shows, there are figures and tables in there that show that the queuing that's already hundreds of feet long during the peak hours would increase in all directions. On Route 9D, in the weekday PM peak hour, the average queue would increase from 664 feet to 921 feet. That's the applicant's data. We're not making it up. In the AM peak hour, the average queue would also increase. Right now, the average queue doesn't block Marlerville Road. With the project, the average queue would block Marlerville Road. So those long queues block businesses? I'm sorry, I do represent 20-plus people, so if you wouldn't mind me just going a little longer?
I'll give you a few more minutes.
Thank you. I really won't take too long.
But this is, yeah, but as long as, just the caveat to that is that the people that you're representing, that none of them are going to get up this evening to speak.
I can't say none of them will, but at least two of them offered me their time.
There was no offering of time. Each person gets an individual three minutes. You're trying to keep the process moving. If they all wish to speak, then...
They don't all wish to speak, so I'll just take a little bit more time. I promise I'll keep it short.
If you're going to...
We're objecting. There's three minutes you have to talk.
Yes, well, this also isn't a court either, so I have free rein to run this meeting the way I wish to run the meeting. So please, I'll give you a little latitude. I'll give you another three minutes to finish up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So again, just to review some of the findings that our traffic engineer put in writing. On the New Hamburg roadside, the queues go back so far that traffic can't even get to those new turn lanes that they're proposing, so they really wouldn't help, and they would create safety hazards. I'll let you read that in more detail in the traffic report. We also believe that they underestimated the number of vehicle trips based on the classification of the store. Again, I'll let you read all of that, but he does point out a number of safety issues and also congestion issues. And so for the traffic alone, this project merits a positive declaration. A positive declaration will let you, exactly what you were asking for before, to require alternatives to be presented so that you can analyze them. That's what you'll get with a POSDEC process and an EIS process, so we advocate that. There are a number of other environmental impacts which others have spoken to: water resources, historic resources, the visual impacts of a 7,800-square-foot, 34-foot-tall building, which is totally out of context with the surrounding neighborhood, open 24 hours. I'll let you read the rest of that in my letter. These are just a few of the impacts that would affect residents' quality of life and property values, as well as the safety of the environment, and they merit a positive declaration. However, we're calling on the Planning Board to reject the project out of hand. This project is only allowed if the Planning Board awards special permits. It's not automatic. I won't go through all the criteria for a special permit, but a couple to highlight: A special permit could only be awarded if the project fits into the "orderly development" of the district, which this does not. Also, if it is no more objectionable to nearby properties than permitted uses, this is far more objectionable than permitted uses, like homes and offices. And for those and many other reasons, the special permit should be denied, site plan subdivision, all should be denied. The town should stay true to the vision of a walkable and economically productive Houstonville hamlet that will be an asset to Wappinger for decades to come. Please do the right thing for Wappinger and deny the project. Thank you, and thank you for giving me a little extra time.
Okay. All right. Franca Petrillo, Ten Apple Lane. You were giving conferences? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Franca Petrillo. I reside in Ten Apple Lane in Houstonville, and I stand before this board again to voice my concerns over the proposed Gasland patrolling project. Along with many others, I've written letters and emails asking for support and information. It's disheartening that we, the residents, most affected by this project, receive a minimal response from the town officials elected to represent us in making decisions that are detrimental to our health, safety, and well-being. I would like to thank the Planning Board for having tonight's public input meeting and allowing us to voice our concerns. Although you listened to many that spoke in October and November, I'm not certain whether you heard us or heard our concerns. From our perspective, it's not about competition, it's about health, safety, and well-being. These are legitimate concerns by the Houstonville hamlet. This is no longer about Houstonville either. It affects the entire town of Wappingers, because without that 1,000-foot and 2,500-foot protection, gas station can be built anywhere in our town, and even by your road, because you're all Wappingers resident. You will have no control. We have asked for that to be put back. I'm not opposed to the Gasland developing. I think it's a wonderful thing to clean up that property that's been like that for probably 15 or 20 years. And why was the town not proactive? Why in the last 10 or 15 years, why didn't they demand those people living on that property to clean up that mess? Why is an outside company controlling what is happening in our hamlet, what's happening in our town? The Houstonville neighbors should not have had to pay out of pocket for an attorney and a true traffic engineer to find out what the true traffic pattern in our town is. It is the Town Board, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board's responsibility to protect and do what is best for the residents of this town. The first time I stood here, I read to you the purpose of the Planning Board, as you all well know. That responsibility is not only to guide growth and development, but to ensure, I quote, "public safety" to its residents. Again, I look to you for answers from a safety, health, and environmental perspective that greatly affects the Houstonville hamlet. This project will affect our health, safety, and environment. Cars do pollute. Spills can happen due to human error. The report that a car will be entering and leaving every 37 seconds will pollute our neighborhood, and the cars coming and going, not only for the convenience, they will pollute our neighborhood as well. No one has taken into account the people purchasing items at the convenience store, the four to eight people living there. The report is unrealistic.
Do you have a lot more?
Not too much.
If you have something that you can...
Yes, I would like to...
If you have it in writing, I mean, we would like for you to provide that to the secretary, and she'll distribute it to everyone.
I will give her a pressure copy if I could. But I want to just address the proposed act, what the applicant was quoting. The proposed action will not have a significant adverse environmental impact as a result, and noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. The proposed action will not have a significant adverse environmental impact on human health from exposure. I have at least three articles here telling you what happens with gas stations and health for medical, and I will give those to the secretary.
I guarantee if you submit that, we will all look at that, and we'll take that into account.
And what about the children on the school buses? Every morning, those school buses have windows open. That's because of COVID. They ride past that site. You have to consider that. And maybe, you know, under normal circumstances, a little bit of exposure is fine, but we live behind that gas station. That's the only thing we're opposing to. We live behind, we will be getting the odors, we will be getting the fumes, and we will be getting the lighter, the lighting, not from the gas station, but the hundreds of cars that are going to be there at night, all night long, and the noise, and everything else. And even the felling of trees was amended. 26 trees will be removed because of this gas station. That will affect our wells, and that will affect our environment around us. Please get an environmental impact statement in place, and please look at this project very carefully before giving permission. I thank you so much for your time.
Lee Hall, 126 Dogwood Drive.
I am Lee Hall, 126 Dogwood Drive. I'm the rector of St. Nicholas New Hamburg, and until last week, a resident of Houstonville, where I maintain a post office box. In the nearly four years I lived on Creek Road, I loved walking my dogs along Marleville Road and look forward to enjoying organic produce from Rubber Creek Farm each season. I am deeply concerned personally about this development. I'm concerned about potential spills contaminating water and food that residents consume. As a pastor who works in the area, I'm concerned about the traffic this immense project will create in an intersection that is already congested. You know, residents of this part of the Hudson Valley have a long history of favoring quality of life over development by utility companies. Light spillage into yards and homes does not preserve quality of life. Sitting in traffic on 9D with groceries in the car does not preserve quality of life. Contaminated food and water does not preserve quality of life. Having to pull pets and children off the road out of the way of oncoming traffic does not preserve quality of life. Finally, I'm aware that some have called this a political issue, and I'd like to raise up to the board that persons on both sides of the aisle oppose this development. I would hope that the board recognizes the amount of public opposition to this plan. No one except for the applicant has spoken in support. But the outside area, outside of here, is a tense revival full of people who have showed up to protest. As their elected representatives, I would expect you to be sensitive to their legitimate concerns. All due respect to the architect, please look at our shirts. It might not be to his liking, but we love our treasure nesting doll store. Thank you.
The next person on here. Zoe Nezour. You didn't want to speak, correct? No?
What's her name?
They didn't put down an address, so skip over them. Joe Finnegan from 7 Marleville. Okay, Terry Clayton, 13 Plaza Road. Nick Panessa, 118 New Hamburg Road. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Nick Panessa. I just bought a house at 118 New Hamburg Road with my wife. It's a beautiful, 1870s-built, old farmhouse style that we just spent months renovating. And we brought something that was dilapidated, possibly with someone's eyes, almost ready to be knocked down. Someone flipped it, didn't do that good of a job. We brought it back. You cannot buy the wood that's in that house anywhere. The house on the corner, yes, some of the charm was taken away, but it's definitely way more charming than a gas station. The properties between there and the auto body shop need help. They do need help. It's up to us to work together as a community to figure out what we can do to make it better, not demolish it and put up a gas station that is never going to be anything different. There's a property in the corner of Old Hopeless Road and 9D in South, it was a gas station 30 years ago. It's been a vacant gas station for that long. You know, I feel like with some government help, the great work that these people do as far as architecture, clearly, would look awesome on Route 9 and Old Hopeless Road. It's already traffic, the same type of not being able to turn out would work over there. I'm not going to take up too much of my time. She could have a couple of minutes. Thank you very much for all of your time.
Thanks. Hope really he already spoke. Mr. Allen, 2447 Route 9D in Houstonville? No? I believe they have a copy. They've been bringing everybody in. Mr. Sine, 102 Oak Park Terrace.
She's pronounced Singh. It's pronounced Singh.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. My name's Janjit Singh. I live in Wappingers Falls. I grew up in this area since I moved here from India when I was eight years old. That nesting doll place, honestly, I would like to say that's just what makes that town of Houstonville. It's not these gas stations that we keep building, or like other corporations that keep building up these buildings, and once they go away or they go bankrupt, we're left, the town is left to clean up their mess. And this is, I think, what would eventually probably, who knows, maybe 50 years from now, 60 years, you know, nobody knows. Maybe the gas station won't be doing so well. Maybe because things get electrified, what are they going to do with the building? What are they going to do with the tanks that are going to be left there for the gasoline? You know, that's a cleanup mess that the town's going to have to worry about cleaning up later on. Also, why don't we bring in artists, musicians, to revitalize the town? Why haven't we asked them to, you know, consider ideas on what to do with those properties? Because it's the people, like the gentleman over there who bought the house, who revitalized the home and rebuilt it, you know, through their sweat and labor. Though, that's what revitalizes a town, not a gas station, not these, you know, corporations that come in, do, make their money, and then leave. And then, of course, again, I'll say it again, the town's left to clean up the mess, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Manel, 10 Dean Avenue.
Hi, my name is Petra Manel, and yes, indeed, I live at 10 Dean Avenue. I have to read this off the page because I'm very, very anxious about this, and in general, these past six months since these open hearings started have been extremely tough. I feel that I've aged a decade in this half year. I've lost a lot of sleep over this whole project. The potential impact on me and my family is manifold, and this is what I would like to talk to you about. So what keeps me up at night is, one, even longer traffic lines, per the traffic study from Mr. Klein, even more cars may take the shortcut on Dean Avenue at the maximum speed their cars will apparently go. We regularly have to wait to turn onto Dean Avenue from both sides. This project could add time to whatever trip we try to make, and it may also mean that visitors may complain about sitting in traffic. Some friends already add a 10-minute buffer at peak traffic times because they do not want to arrive later than they say they will. Two, air pollution from the gas vapors and exhaust. These cause headaches and mental issues, cancers, and lung problems. We would like to enjoy our new porch without having to worry about our health. Three, noise pollution from longer line of traffic. Three, noise pollution from longer line of traffic and sirens due to more accidents. The noise has proven negative effects for the heart, potentially causing earlier death. Again, this is all published. I'm not making any of this up. Four, spills when the pumps get filled or when people get gas. Clearly, there is a potential impact on the shallow wells of the whole neighborhood, including, of course, ours. Five, historic character of the hamlet with six homes built in the 1700s and more than 20 from the 1800s, supposed to be protected per three town plans, some of them we heard about. This huge building canopy and acre of asphalt will destroy this character for sure. This is where we bought our homes because we wanted to live in a quaint hamlet and not a strip mall. Six, 26 trees will get cut down. A beautiful 150-year-old home gone, replaced by asphalt. This project enhances global warming as asphalt heats a lot more than grass and trees and we may all have less water in our wells as it won't go into the ground any longer, which in the current drought is a pretty severe fear. Seven, property prices taking a dive. 16% hit in property prices is published. Will Gasland put 16% into my pocket if we ever decide to sell?
Please address the board.
Well, I had to tell him that I don't think he's going to give me any money. A father and husband was recently killed while walking down to the train station. Route 28 has no pedestrian walkways and cars fly down the hill. I'm listing this sad fact here because I feel that this neighborhood, this hamlet, is not only being neglected, but rather the people we voted into office turn a blind eye to the needs of this community. This project would lead to more traffic, more speeding, more pollution, less pedestrian safety. I'm a frequent pedestrian myself on Dean Avenue, Marleaville and 9D. Pedestrian safety is a myth there. No measures have been taken to slow down traffic, to decrease the volume and to enhance safety of the people walking. This is what, in my humble opinion, we should spend our time on, not potentially making things less safe with, of all things, a gas station. Please deny this request. At a minimum, please issue a positive declaration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good, thank you.[727.20][727.20][applause] Brad Manel, 10 Dean Avenue.
Hi, my name is Brad Manel. Thank you for accommodations today. My wife and I own a house at 10 Dean Avenue, which is less than 1,000 feet away from the proposed gas station location. Our house was built in 1790. It's 231 years old. I moved to Houstonville more than a decade ago. I was extremely excited to be moving to Houstonville, envisioning the growth of this hamlet community becoming a walking center with many small businesses like Beacon has become. The addition of a gas station at this intersection of 9D and New Hamburg Road is inconsistent with that vision. It will forever change our hamlet of Houstonville. Houstonville will become a drive-through hamlet where motorists fill up their gas tanks, not a destination for strolling around boutique shops or for refined dining. I'm concerned that the Town Planning Board amended Chapter 240, Section 52 zoning code in 2019, removing the 1,000-foot separation between residential housing and the location of the proposed gas stations without putting back any requirements for separation. How does this change protect the public health, safety and welfare of the town of Wapengers' residents? We would not be here today if this law had been amended. I urge the Town Board to reconsider, restore the health and safety protections. The scale of this project is not consistent with the surrounding structures. The proposed three-story structure dwarfs the surrounding structures. The location of the building will block line of sight to New Hamburg Road when approaching the intersection going south of 9D, which will increase the likelihood of accidents. The gas station will adversely impact my daily commuting time. It will add noise and light and air pollution, which will affect my sleep and health. The proximity of the gas station to my house will adversely affect the market value of my family's property. The gas station will affect the peace and quiet on the road of Dean Avenue. There will be traffic cutting through the neighborhood and making U-turns in my driveway. The board must deny the special permit. The board must issue a positive secret declaration. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Slender Kinda, 2775 West Main Street. Singh. It's 83 Sunflower Circle. Thomas, 16 Point Street.
Good evening. My name is Tom Pritchard. I live at 16 Point Street in New Hamburg. I'm an architect. I've been involved in planning most of my life. I'm a current resident here. I drive on that street all the time. I've heard all of the myriad comments about why this project shouldn't take place. It seems to me that it is inappropriate in so many ways and that's been amply documented here. So my point is very clear. It seems to me that if an entire town is opposed to a project like this, that it is incumbent upon the people to listen to the voices of the people in the town. Thank you.
Corey, 115 New Hamburg Road.
Good evening. My name is Corey Rywalt. I'm part owner at 115 and 119 New Hamburg Road, basically right next to where the site is proposed, essentially sitting, you know, directly at the gas tanks themselves. You know, my parents moved up here from the Bronx in 1954, built their house, which is still there, 1960, so they've been there for over 60 years. I grew up there. It's a great place to live. I could walk the church every Sunday across 9D. Can you imagine that today? Could go to the grocery store. We had a little grocery store across the street and what have you. It was just a great place to grow up. And, you know, obviously, things change. The train station opened up, right? It'd been closed for a while, but it opened up and it's fine. I mean, progress is good, growth is good. But, you know, a gas station just isn't the right place. I mean, it's just not the right park. I mean, when I think of Houstonville, what's the vision, right? We talk about sidewalks and boutiques and little shops that you can walk around in, but a gas station, I just don't, I just don't see it. So I applaud the work going on in the town, especially across the street. I see he did a great job there. We're actually renovating my uncle's house. It's an 1872 carriage house. It sits right next to the proposed gas station, so we're getting there, right? But I just don't think that a gas station is the right move here. You know, it's, you know, we've just got to, we've got to come up with a better solution than this. You know, people of Houstonville don't want it. We don't want it, but, so I think we can, you know, try to come up with a better solution. All right, thank you.
Good, thank you for your comments.[1168.56][1168.56][applause] Sarah Bragden, 10 Conklin Street.
Good evening and thank you for hosting this meeting and letting us all comment. I'm Sarah Bragden and I live in Conklin Street in New Hamburg. And although I'm not a resident of Wapengers, I use the post office for my address and my children went to Wapengers School, so, and I pass through and patronize regularly the stores in Houstonville. I have, I vehemently oppose this project. There have been many people that have come up and spoken and given many reasons why it's not, not the right thing to do and I just want to give my support to those people and tell you that I agree with them. I just would like to also bring up that as I was looking at your agenda on your website, I thought I'd look around at the website and see what was there on the Wapengers website and I came across Town Facts. And under this heading is a substantial, is a subheading called Experience Wapinger History. And Joey Cavachini, I guess his name is, the Wapengers Town Historian, writes specifically about the historical significance of the hamlet of Houstonville and its buildings. And seeing as you promote on your website the historic significance of Houstonville, you must be proud of it. And you must feel that it's an important thing to continue to support and that you need to listen to the voices of your constituents. I also would just want to add that there's lots of talk about how the Gasland project will help traffic, will change the patterning and upgrade the light. Those are things that can be done by the town without the Gasland project, so although they're touting that as something that's really going to benefit us, that's something we can do on our own with the Department of Transportation. And the gas stations are going to become obsolete soon. Electric cars are coming. We don't need another gas station. It's not forward-thinking and it's not economically strategic if you look into the future a little bit further. Lastly, I'd like to say that I own about an, over, about an acre and a half of land in New Hamburg and I have an old barn on that land and it's from 1790 also. And I am trying to subdivide 1.4 acres in order to be able to reconstruct that barn, which the whole community loves because it's a beautiful architect, architecture. And although I live in the town of Poughkeepsie, I'm not allowed with 1.4 acres to subdivide my property and renovate an existing building that everybody wants to see renovated. It boggles my mind that I'm not allowed to renovate an existing building on my own property, but we can put a gas station that nobody wants on a small parcel in the middle of a small hamlet. So I, I don't know what went on to be able to allow this to even get to this point, but whatever it is, it should be undone. Thank you for listening.
William from 107 Old Hopeless Road. Ashley from 118 New Hamburg Road.
Hello. My name's Ashley Dalviskovia. I live at 118 New Hamburg Road. The house is from 1870. It's 151 years old. It's directly diagonal to the project site. I've lived in Wapengers my entire life. I was born and raised in the village and now live in the town. My husband and I purchased our home this past summer and spent months perfecting it before we finally moved in last month. We chose this home because of the character. We did not want a new home in a new development. We wanted what we got. We wanted the old floors. We wanted the old trim. We wanted the old hamlet. There are many reasons people are here tonight. Many reasons people are against the Gasland project. Traffic seems to be a huge concern, obviously. Truthfully, my largest concern is the health and environmental risks that can come with living so close to a gas station. No resident chose their home based on living close to a gas station and for this choice to be made for the residents is unfair. I'm a local small business owner, so in no way do I want to put anyone trying to open a business down. Instead, I and the people of Houstonville would love to help Mr. Neshor up, plan a project that would benefit our beautiful hamlet if he so loves that property. That project that we would help would not include gas. Even if Gasland does their very best with avoiding any spills or contamination, accidents do happen. It's human error. The residents, including my family, do not want to fall victim of any possible accidents. This is our home. We do not welcome a gas station. We do welcome a different plan. My children should not look out of their bedroom windows and see strangers pumping gas. Strangers pumping gas should not look up and see my children in their bedrooms because the other night I was laying in my daughter's bed, looked out the window and noticed that that's exactly what I would see. I've spent 33 years dreaming of my home like every little girl does and I got it and my husband helped make that happen. And now it's a nightmare. I'm terrified. I'm never going to be able to let my little girls stand at a bus stop. It's bad enough with the traffic of the train, but it's okay. It comes and goes. For that to be all night long and someone said it and I'm no better than any other human being, but what kind of person is going to live on top of a gas station? A person that wants to hide with traffic coming in and out? Drug dealers. Do we need more of them? I don't think so. We have enough. This is, it's terrible. The environmental effect and the health effect. If our wells become contaminated, I don't know. I'm in the beauty industry. Water contamination, you don't realize how much it affects you. Your skin has a 70% absorption rate. You can so easily be poisoned by water that has any type of contamination and most of the time you don't find out that these contaminations have happened until it's far too late. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Stephen Moore, 29 Amherst Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to add my voice to the many residents voicing their protests against this project tonight. There's the potential contamination to the water table. Traffic is miserable enough. You've heard the details from the residents that spoke before me. Not one has spoken in favor of this project. When did you last have a project that drew this many people, this much interest, this strong a response? What does that tell you? The sheer number of police out there is enough. The applicants have assembled, the experts, that's clear. They've counted their foot candles and who knows what else. But I'm a resident, 28 years of Tall Trees Development. My fellow residents here tonight, we're experts on living in Houstonville and Houstonville says it does not want or need this project. I'm not against development. I remember growing up in Duchess County. Route 9 was one lane in each direction. Look at it now. Let's leave Route 9 to Route 9 and leave this bit of Houstonville to Houstonville. Let's support the people you heard from tonight that are fixing up Houstonville from the inside. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to need to take a quick five, 10-minute break and then we'll reconvene.